Can I call the regular meeting of council order for Monday, December 2nd, 2024? Before approval of the agenda, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we remove thirteen point one from the agenda. Secondary, Council Norbury, discussion, thirteen point one is our closed. Okay, going to call the question, all in favor? Carried. Take approval of the amended agenda, Council Norbury?
The December 2nd, 2024 regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended?
Secondary, Council Hoffman, all in favor? Carried. Minutes from November 26th, 2024, regular council meeting minutes? Recommendation, please, Council Noxana?
That the November 26th, 2024, regular council meeting minutes be adopted as presented?
Secondary, Council Dusso, any arrows or remissions from council? Staff? Thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Any business arising from the minutes, council? Staff? Thank you. Okay, I know we have a delegation tonight, which is the school District 59. My understanding is they're just coming to the community, so I think we'll just move on until they get here and then we'll finish off what we're working on, then go back to that delegation. So consent agenda, take the recommendation, please, Council Norbury?
That all items in the December 2nd, 2024 consent agenda be moved for information?
Secondary, Council Julik, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Are there any items council would like to bring forward for discussion? Councilor Julik?
Seven point four, please.
Okay, for discussion, secondary, Council Dusso, all in favor? Carried. Council Julik?
I know that we have bulletin boards at the community center. I'm not sure if they are specific to District of Tumblr Ridge items, but I did think that the notices that were in the package were good ones. Fort St. John's a good hub for everybody, so I was just wondering if we were able to ask staff to, you know, the rest of it. I never know how I'm supposed to phrase that, so I'm looking at you to finish that up for me.
No problem. Mr. Curry, just curiosity from staff side, is this something that we can make sure that's advertised through the channels we can use, whether that's our boards or such within the community center?
Yes, Your Worship, I think that's something that we can do on our community notice bulletins.
Good enough.
Cool, thanks.
Council Dusso?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward seven point three.
Okay, discussion, secondary, Council Norbury, all in favor? Carried.
I would just like to thank Industrial Metaworks for sending out the letter, and I would also like to correct that we, I know the mayor was there participating, but I do know we didn't actually support them through the council, but we were there to support, so thank you very much for the letter.
You bet, thank you. Are there any other items council would like to bring forward for discussion? Okay. All right, we're going to go back to delegations, six point one, School District 59, Chad Anderson, Board of Education Chair, Paul Chisholm, Director of Instruction, and Kristi Fennell, Superintendent/CEO invited by council to discuss the Stronger BC Future Ready Action Plan and if Tumblr Ridge will benefit from the program. Delegation table's up here, please, welcome to the delegation.
Just over here.
Yep, there's room for all of you. You bet, feel free.
No, leave him up there alone.
Yeah, exactly. They drove me out here to drop me off, apparently, I didn't realize, but yes, great, excellent. Thank you very much for the invite, Mayor and Council. It's great to come out and make acquaintance again, renew acquaintance, and so we do have presentation, I don't know if Paul will be handing those out, and, but yeah, here to kind of give you the landscape of recruitment retention initiatives in Peace River South, and then answer specific questions about the details that you requested. So, the landscape of our staffing shortage, obviously, as you know, worldwide and provincewide, there is a labor shortage in many categories, and certainly in the case of teachers and education staff of all kinds, and we're certainly no exception here in Peace River South, and we always start our meetings with a recognition that we serve our students on Treaty Eight land, and we have First Nations, two First Nations communities, as well as Strong Maiti Community, and we serve First Nations students from across Canada as well. And about one-third of our student population is Indigenous and two-thirds non-Indigenous. So our budget for recruitment has increased over past years, but it's important to point out that we cannot use district funds directly for recruitment incentives like signing bonuses or other cash incentives, and that is due to collective agreement language, and so when some districts did try that, the province encouraged them to cease with that behavior. And so, other initiatives were, have been brought in by the Ministry of Education, which we'll be talking about, but we do have one exception that we're skating through with, which is our moving expenses policy that allows us to cover some of the expenses of incoming staff. And so we're kind of moving from the drought area that you see in that picture to hopefully brighter days ahead, and as we are learning, including with today's weather, every drought will come to an end, and so our board is engaged in advocacy, and I'm happy to say that we do have staff joining School District 59 from local students, I, you know, I can picture them in my mind, folks that have grown up through our system that have become teachers, and certainly folks from elsewhere in BC, across Canada, and certainly around the world as well. So what our Board of Education, which is a board of seven trustees, has engaged in is advocacy with the provincial government and the Ministry of Education through meetings with MLAs and ministers, the BC School Trustees Association, we act through that as well, and we've been successful with some, they're called Northern Interior Branch motions at the AGM, and those direct our association to work with the Ministry of Education to work on the recruitment and retention issue. We've been asking for a return of service bursary of the sort that the Northern Alberta Development Council has had in place for many years, and we're starting to hear rumblings that there may be progress on something a little closer to that, and we are asking the province to really promote careers in teacher education, and we have some local initiatives on that as well that we'll be discussing shortly. And one of our major initiatives over the past six years really is around teacher education programs, so there are a few of those in the province, including the ACOE program available locally, but we have been asking for more flexible teacher education programs with an online or hybrid option that some other universities use. We recommend one out of Alberta, but we'd like to see one in BC, and so UNBC is working on a program to that effect, and so we've been advocating to the BC Teachers Council to approve that at the earliest opportunity as UNBC gets it off to the races. So I'll hand the floor, if I may, to our Superintendent of Schools, Kristi Fennell, and we'll turn the mic to you.
Thank you for inviting us, and just to continue talking about advocacy, for the last five years, recruitment has been more challenging, and so we have sat within the district, we have the Board of Education that advocates for us at well at a governance level to try and get different ministry policies to go around finding people, but then within the superintendent's role, there's the opportunity to sit on a rural and remote committee with the British Columbia School Trustees Association, so the BCSTA, so representing the BCSSA, which is the British Columbia Superintendent of Schools Association. I sit on that, and we've had opportunities to meet with the teacher regulation branch to try and get processes sped up. We meet with the Ministry of Education to get some of the things that Paul's going to talk about. We meet with the Teacher Qualification Service, and as Chad mentioned, the British Columbia Teachers Education Council, which strangely enough is a council that is elusive and mysterious, and it's, they're not great at communicating out the decisions they make, but they're the council that approves all the post-secondary education programs that are offered within British Columbia, and so it's really about getting time with them to talk about how, for the next ten years, we're going to need some short-term solutions, but also some long-term solutions to solve our hiring shortages and crisis, because there's no quick fix. And so it's sitting on these working groups and trying to get things moving, and realizing that none of that happens as quickly as we'd like. And so myself, I sit on that group, and then our Director of Instruction, Paul Chisholm, is going to talk about the groups he sits on.
Currently sitting on a data group that is concentrating on information related to what's happening from the labor market across the province, and so I have an opportunity to represent the School Trustees Association in that group and being a voice for the north. And we are being more intentional around getting, you know, putting our name forward to be on committees like that, so we can share the voice of the north when there's opportunity to share that voice for things that are happening across the province, so I do sit on that. And then with the bursary awards that happened with the, forget the title of it there, it's the, oh yeah, sorry, the rural bursary awards. So initially, when that was first being created, I sat on that panel as well, as far as creating opportunities for university students and education programs to apply for bursaries to do their practicums here in the north. We believe that if we can get students in their university programs to come up and check us out, that that in and of itself might be enough to sell what's happening, what's the great things that are happening here in the north. And so had an opportunity to sit down with the ministry folks when it was in its infancy in talking about what are some of the needs of northern districts, and what should we be saying to university program students in their education programs? What can we say to them to sort of draw them to the north? Because we do believe that once they're here, they'll see that living in the north has, there's great value to being in our communities, and every community has something special to offer. And so we have had, this year in particular, a student leaving us here this week who came up from the University of British Columbia, and did a, she applied for and received a bursary. I received communication from Thompson Rivers University yesterday, we have two students who are interested in coming to the area as well for their spring practicums here starting in February. And so I had the opportunity to sit on that committee as well, as far as forming up what that could look like potentially for students coming our way, and when I say our way, I mean in northern British Columbia.
Yep. Council Norbury?
Sorry to interrupt there, Mr. Chisholm. Really excited to hear that you're able to entice people to come up to visit. You know, I'd like to jump in there and say, if that ever happens, I'd love to hear about it. You know, I'm sure we'd love to hear about it, because we'd love to take them out and show them around the community. You know, we're trying to do similar things with healthcare professionals in our community, and that handshake, that hello, that tour around the community, if that can get us over the finish line to get a teacher here, we'd absolutely love to do that. So, you know, just want to pause there and say, please reach out to the mayor, anybody, we'd be happy to help, thanks.
Yeah, and a different program we're not involved with currently was the CEF program out of the University of British Columbia with the career education, we had grouped some students, excuse me, I'm floundering here, with students from the University of British Columbia come up two separate years, and we met with folks out here, and it was pretty exciting, and the students really enjoyed their visits, so we appreciated that partnership at the time, for sure. CFE, career field experience. The other piece we wanted to talk about was the work that had gone into, and this was sponsored as part of our strategic plan in creating the discover59.com website as a recruiting website for teachers, and so we flogged this website kind of everywhere we go now. There's wonderful videos on there referencing different things that are happening across the district from teachers who are new to the profession and teachers who've been in the profession for quite some time, talking about their experiences and what it's like to come work in the north. Also, we have, as part of our recruiting, we work with Make a Future, Applied Education, and new, within the last two years, we work with Indeed, which is an internationally recognized recruiting platform, and so with them, we do virtual events and information sessions, and we're finding through Indeed that the virtual events are quite popular and boding us quite well. But we also have university partnerships as well, and so talked about UBC earlier, we continue to have a relationship with them, the UBC out of Nelson, their WECTAP program, we forged a relationship with them last year. Simon Fraser University is partnered with Northern College as far as the ACOE program is concerned, and we have a relationship with both U of A and more frequently now, the University of Calgary with their Workland School of Education program. So we have a number of students in the north currently, eight students who will graduate from the Workland program in this school year that will be certified teachers, Alberta certified, but will certainly help them becoming BC certified. So I also spoke to a little bit that rural bursary award, we do have, as of yesterday, two students from Thompson Rivers University who are wanting to come our way here in the spring, so we'll continue to support that as well.
So to add on to a few things that Paul just mentioned, if you get an opportunity on our website, sd59.bc.ca, if you click on the icon to discover your path, there are videos for Chatwin, Dawson Creek, and Tumblr Ridge to showcase each geographic area of our district that you can go and watch. And the reason we partner with the University of Calgary and Workland is because they offer an online distance education program that we're trying to get here in BC, and so that means our teachers can continue teaching in our district while they're taking their courses online in the evening and on the weekends and completing their education degree. So there isn't a program like that in British Columbia, and that's why we keep trying to advocate that one of the post-secondary universities in BC, UNBC, you know, UBC, UVIC, that they'd be able to have that opportunity so that people who wanted to become teachers in their geographic region wouldn't have to leave the area, because when you have family or commitments, it's sometimes not easy to get to those big centers, and so that's why we've been promoting Workland out of UFC, because they can stay in their location and they just have to go for two or three weeks in the summer to Calgary and live on residence. So that's the benefit of that program. But the real reason we're here is to tell you about what we've been in, so year one, and I'll just go through this incentive program that the Ministry of Education and Childcare came out with, and so we've done all our advocacy, and so finally, we feel the Ministry of Education and Childcare has listened to us, and in June 2023, they provided $500,000 for pre-employment cash hiring incentives, and they had to be pre-employment, because if they weren't, they went against the collective agreements that we have throughout the province, so it couldn't be a post-hiring incentive, it had to be pre-hiring. So some wordplay around those. And then BCPC, which is the British Columbia Public Schools?
Employers.
Employers Association, thank you. We have a lot of acronyms in education, and if you're in education, you're aware of more of them, but it still complexes you now and then. And so BCPC was tasked with using an equity-informed criteria that we're not privy to, to decide which districts would get the incentives. So in year one, there were two tiers for pre-employment, there's a typo, our apologies, that's why education's important and spelling. So there was tier one, which is $10,000, or tier two, which was a $5,000 pre-employment hiring incentive based on rural and remote. So in August 2023, we were approved for four $10,000 pre-employment hiring incentives, two for Tumblr Ridge, and two for Chatwin for specialty positions that were determined to be hard to fill. And so these pre-employment incentives can only be used for certified teachers, not for hiring non-certified teachers. And so in that year, we were able to fill one position in Tumblr Ridge with that $10,000 incentive, and that's the one you received the letter on, from, I believe, the deputy minister at the time, Jen McPry, who wrote that. And so that was year one. So then, am I passing it over to you for year two, and I'm continuing on, and you do year three?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll do year two. Okay. It was an interesting drive. So, and Paul drove, so I'm good, I sat in the back, I was great. It was a great drive, sky looked great, okay. Year two, so incentives for the 24, 25 school year were made available to apply for in December of 2023, so that was last year's. And so we submitted a request last year for eleven tier one positions between Chatwin and Tumblr for $10,000 each for a signing bonus, and then we also submitted three tier two positions between Chatwin and Tumblr Ridge for $5,000. And the reason we were only picking Tumblr Ridge and Chatwin is because in Dawson Creek, while it's been challenging, it's not as challenging as it's been in our smaller communities, and a lot of that has to do with just people knowing where they are, but also housing, and at those times, housing was harder to find in both communities, so we didn't submit any for Dawson Creek. And then on December 20th of 23, so this was last year, BCPC advised us that based on their equity-informed criteria, we only qualified for four incentives in Chatwin only, but they didn't give us any reason why we couldn't, like why Tumblr Ridge wasn't picked, and what happened then was, we put them on four hard-to-fill jobs in Chatwin, only three of them got used, and then I believe after your letter, BCPC came out and said we could, or after you had approached the ministry at UBCM, I think is the proper acronym?
Yep.
And I still don't know what that stands for.
Union B C Municipality Association.
I always think UBC, no. And so once you approached them there, then BCPC got back to us that we could use that incentive for Chatwin and Tumblr Ridge, so that was beneficial. And then I will pass it over to what we've been informed of for year three.
Thank you. Sorry. Oh, that's okay. So the timeliness of those previous requests too were interesting as well, because it was based on the positions that we were currently seeking, like the jobs we were trying to fill at that time, and so that played into what we were submitting for criteria, or submitting for jobs that met their criteria. Now for round three, they are talking about, I feel like we have more time to put together a stronger application in a sense that it's based on what we're looking for and planning for September of 2025, and so they've created three tiers, a tier one A, tier one, and tier two. So tier one A is actually a $15,000 pre-employment incentive, tier one is 10, and tier two is 5,000. And so what we've done this year and what we're working on now, we have until December 15th, I believe, to submit, we're just putting all of our data together around matching what we believe our picture to look like for September of next year with the criteria that they presented us with, and so when we're looking at that criteria, we're looking at our current staff, what we project that we're going to need for September, we also look at the criteria that they provide around, you know, is the community isolated, the extremely difficult positions to fill, what number of teachers do you have authorized on letters of permission, and have you had positions that have been in extended periods of vacancy? And so we're putting together a picture for both Tumblr Ridge and Chatwin based on the criteria that we're seeing. We don't have the same challenges in Dawson, so we tend to focus our energy on both Tumblr Ridge and Chatwin and try to match up the criteria. So we are looking at the tier one A, tier one, and tier two criteria and determining how it is or what it is we feel we're going to need come September, and so that's the work that we've been doing here in the past, I don't know, past couple of weeks in preparation for our submission, and so Tumblr Ridge, again, will be a significant part of our submission, particularly for, we're trying to define if we fit tier one A, we know we fit tier one, but we're trying to determine if we match the criteria necessary for tier one A for some of our requests, so just been doing a lot of number crunching and looking at the criteria as well. So we will be submitting this prior to winter break and seeing how our submission bodes.
And one A is 15,000 this year, right?
One A is 15,000, correct.
Yes, so we're trying to write up an explanation to prove that you're more remote than Chatwin, because we don't actually understand why Chatwin got picked last year over Tumblr Ridge, because it should have been equal, and so we are going to talk about distance to hospitals, distance to busing, or just being able to get to other locations, so we're going to tidy that up, because we're still unsure why, what made Chatwin more favorable in their equity-based criteria.
All right, you guys are ready for some questions?
Sure.
All right, well, thank you very, I mean, first of all, I want to thank you very much for coming up, and coming in person, weren't sure with the weather, but appreciate you guys coming up, and, you know, it's great to have you guys come up and just explain some of the stuff, and, you know, so we all understand it, and then see if we can try to advocate somewhat on your behalf without getting into your langle, but I think some of the stuff that we went down to UBCM with, obviously assisted, you know, and that's just, you know, having conversations with the guys and then taking something down there. something down there. And they've changed their mind or changed their scope a little bit, and maybe we can advocate again as you apply that we sent a letter off to the ministry as well and see if we get anything there. I am going to open up to council first, so Council Norbury and then Council Naksana.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. Again, thank you for coming. I think I have an idea for you on how to present your case for why Tumblr Ridge is less desirable. We can call it the distance to Tim Hortons factor. We are a little bit away, farther away, you can add that in, right? Tim Hortons, you're right, I mean, Chatwin, you're right on the highway, so. Firstly, I wanted to thank Paul Chisholm and all of School District 59 in assisting us in our ECE crisis. If it wasn't for Paul, we wouldn't have what we have today. You know, it was definitely due to his efforts, reaching out to YMCA, joining us on the childcare task force, that I fully believe it was, you know, 90% up to him. So thank you very much, Paul, for that and, you know, for all your staff. So I'll be honest, I have a spy on the inside, my wife's a teacher. So, you know, I definitely am aware of what's going on at the high school, at schools to a point. So one of the questions that I had is around offering additional incentives. We can't give cash, I get it, but is there an opportunity for like a friends of the school district to start up where they were given funds and then we could provide some other non-cash incentives? You know, we're talking a lot with healthcare recruitment and retention, we're getting creative, we're hosting events, we're hosting dinners. You know, we in the District of Tumblr Ridge, we offer passes to our facilities. So that'd be the first thing, is are we able to sneak that in? Do you think that'd be a benefit to your recruiting package? Yeah.
I'm going to guess that the legal requirements that apply to us probably only apply to us. So I do know, like, one of those exceptional circumstances that took place last year, I think it was, was that there was some sort of friends of or associated community thing that was providing some sort of cash incentive. And I think the province came out with some of these restrictions after that, so. But warm and hospitable communities are great wherever you find them, but yeah, that's a very nonspecific answer, but I think, yeah, yeah.
Counsel, oops, sorry. No, go ahead.
I missed a lot of those responses. I think just even, some of the things that happen in the community that are just great things that happen in the community, like I think of Chatwin, for example, where I wasn't aware that one night a week, people, folks meet at the public library to do a communal meal. And what we found was new folks to the community, new teachers, thought that was kind of a cool opportunity to come together to get to know people in the community. So it wasn't specific to SD59, but once I became aware of it, I certainly shared it, right? And I use that when I'm having conversations with new teachers. Hey, sometimes it's difficult to get to know people when you're coming to a community. Here's a cool thing that happens in Chatwin. And so like, as far as incentivizing, I think just having those stories and being able to share those stories are wonderful. The one thing I can compliment this community on for sure is your website. I send people to your local website because it's exceptional. And so if there's other little stories like, hey, these are things that are happening on Thursday nights that maybe you didn't know, we could certainly use that information.
That's good to know. Council Naksana.
Thank you. And thanks for coming out. It's a wonderful drive, I would agree, when the roads are good. Do you guys see any benefit to us advocating for some of these specific things, like the teacher training being local, or more of these cash incentives, or even the criteria? Is this something that would be helpful, or is it more of a hindrance and like, why are these random people getting involved in education?
Well, I think something that trustees sometimes complain about is that at UBCM, you get to meet with all the ministers. And at our, at our education events, sometimes we can catch a minister on, you know, at a coffee stand. So, yeah, I think whenever our interests are aligned and communicating like this in advance to let you know what our priorities are, we are happy to have more, more folks join the cause and to use the tools that are available to you, for sure.
Follow up?
Yeah, just, oh, sorry. Can I just add to that one?
Yeah.
Thank you. First, I'm going to add to the previous one of the question that was asked to Paul and Chad. I think that we do a new teacher dinner out here, that maybe we haven't utilized as much where we invite new teachers, we gather in one of the restaurants, and we, you know, thank them for coming to the district, but there could be a partnership where potentially the District of Tumblr Ridge is invited for that. And then what you do there is up to you.
I appreciate that, so I'll be honest, COVID really took a hit in Tumblr Ridge, a lot of things got left off the table from our side. We actually started a process where we would take healthcare professional one night for dinner, and then we obviously took our educational folks out for dinner as well, and they selected the restaurant that was paid for on behalf of the municipality from our taxpayers. And I know I've had the conversation with council and even our new CAO, that we need to make sure we're back into that, where we're doing the one time with the healthcare professionals, but also that same year or something with our educational professionals as well. So we've missed that, but we used to do the, on the DTR side, but if you guys are doing one when you have new teachers coming in, I think it'd be great, whether we can all attend, or even if it's only a select couple of us that can make it or whatever, so it's not overtruding on them too when they're firstly new to the community.
I think that'd be a great idea. And the second part I wanted to answer, one of the beauties, it's a double-edged sword. We get to travel lots to Vancouver to go to different conferences, and in the airport, I often watch other districts with their municipalities and their trustees. And it was in those times, I noticed that some districts seemed to get more from the Ministry of Education, the more involved their mayors were, or the more involved their council people, or the more involved that they had those sidebar meetings, or they got into meetings with the Minister of Infrastructure, the Minister of Finance. So I think, especially when, the one we've really been advocating for is a northern bursary program that mirrors northern Alberta, because we lose, in our district, we lose students from high school that go into education that then work 10, 15 minutes across the border in Alberta. And so if we could have a bursary program where their education degree was paid for, their tuition, if they agreed to work three to five years in the north, I think that would have a huge medium and long-term benefit for us, as opposed to the quick fixes we're trying now. So from an advocacy, I think the more people we can get advocating for that, the better.
Yeah, great, and we tried that at UBCM this year, and this is where they came up when they talked about the money they have set aside for tier one and tier two, is that they talked about? Because we try, we try to talk about, you know, I call it loan forgiveness, but, you know, obviously, come back to the area, right? Just something to try and help, again, we need the teachers and we all know that. But I think your comments are right, where we need to get more involved, but make sure we don't step on School District 59 toes, that we're actually working together, so when we go there, we're advocating for the actual same thing, but we're speaking the same thing too.
Absolutely.
Councilor Naksana.
No, I just, I like the idea of us working together to be on the radar, because at UBCM, we do, we have the ear of ministers if we're given the meetings. It's not a guarantee, but there is definitely things that we could work together here for our students.
I got Counselor Hoffman and Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming, really appreciate it. I actually had a few of these things on my mind since I started subbing at the elementary school, but you mentioned the Alberta certification and BC certifications. I won't say they're not equivalent, but they don't cross, don't recognize? So what are we looking at for making an Alberta or an Ontario or whatever BC certification? Is that more education? Is that time?
Well, there's layers to that question too. So one of the hurdles with going through Alberta is you have to, for a new student becoming a teacher, they are having to pay out what it costs to become certified in Alberta. And the teacher regulation branch won't even look at their education degree if they don't have that Alberta certification first. And so it's really, it's another cash hurdle for students coming right out of university to then pay those charges and fees to get certified in BC. The curriculums are also different, quite different. Alberta's is very outcome-focused, this is what you teach. BC has a new big idea curriculum of, you can teach a lot of different things, but here are the big ideas to cover as opposed to the content. So there's not a quick and fast answer to that question, other than the teachers that we have that are currently in our district that are going through UFC at Workland, it's exciting the stuff they're doing. And it's interesting because they're bringing a lot of British Columbia flavor to their education programs, and so they see their education programs adapting a bit too, because they're, they're working and living in that moment. And so it's been interesting, but we've also even broached the college about partnering with the University of Calgary, whereas often Northern Lights College just partners with British Columbia universities, we're trying to open that door to see if they could partner with UFC and have a cohort at Northern Lights College, which I don't believe has been done before, but it's an avenue we're advocating on as well. Then did you want to add to that?
No, other than ultimately, once they have their provincial certification, it's not just, but they're just applying for their BC certification. As far as additional education goes, essentially their credentials get reviewed, and in some cases, they're, they are, they get their certificates. In other circumstances, they may have to do a course or two, maybe in indigenous studies or, sort of depends on what their undergrad is and what their ed degree did, but it's not a, it's not a situation where they have to get reeducated in a grand, in a grand way.
Follow up?
I have another area.
Yep.
So one of the reasons I was thinking about this recently is, last year, it was made very clear that there was a rather severe shortage. So I did apply and I did start subbing, and I actually found out I liked it. So we're, we're good on that front. But there is no viable way for me to go away for education in the current life stage, like I'm talking last career before retirement type option. So this is great that you have financial, but any industry can offer a cash incentive to try to get more labor into their pool. So looking at it from it, look at letter of permission into education in BC, I don't know, is there a direct program or application process for something like that? I'll take that as a no with that expression.
No. But it is interesting, like, I know it's an Alberta program, it's University of Calgary, the Workland School of Education is the one we tend to, I tend to.
We're not getting kickbacks.
No, yeah. Although I should. No, in all seriousness, the reason why I keep talking about it with folks is that it was initially when the University of Calgary built the program, it was for folks who were living in northern Alberta who couldn't, who were employed and couldn't afford to leave their home communities to go off to university, just because of what was happening in their lives. And so the program is wonderful in a sense that you can maintain your current employment for the most part, while getting your ed degree through the University of Calgary. And so its model is pretty good as far as people who can't afford to take four years out of their life or whatever to go off to university, right? Having said that, you're still doing a full university program, it does come at a cost and all those pieces. And the other thing we do is we work with the students. If they're employed with us, we work with them so they can do their practicums at School District 59 as well. So we're trying to work to make it work well for them, but it's also a benefit for us to keep them as employees. Sorry, question.
And I was just going to add, one of our short-term fixes with our number of people who are looking to help us due to the shortage, is for the last two years in the summer, we have teachers who are uncertified come in for a four-day, we don't like to use the term crash course, we call it Teaching 101. It's four intensive days with senior admin and master teachers, where you're led through classroom management, the curriculum, unit planning, lesson planning. And we've heard, we've had great feedback, and from the last two years, we've done it at a cost to the district, it does cost a lot to do that in the summer. But what we're finding is our, some of our uncertified teachers, they're more prepared from that course to enter into the classroom than our brand-new certified teachers just coming right out of university. So it's been beneficial in that sense as well.
Thank you.
All good?
Yep.
Counselor Norbury? You're good? All right, I got a couple of questions for you. What's the number we're short in the South piece? And can, do you have a breakdown between Tumblr, Chatwin and Dawson for teachers?
Currently?
Currently.
The reason I ask it like that is because it does fluctuate, and if you were to look at our website currently, we, I believe I'd have to go look at, we have four postings right now for posts of special responsibility, so teachers.
I think you could use last year's numbers.
Like for overall?
For sure. Well, so I will tell you, last year, there were a number of positions that went unfilled throughout the year, and they were learning assistance positions, and those are the ones that are unfilled this year. And so that creates a challenge, because the learning assistance teacher in a school helps out with all students who have diverse abilities to make sure we have the supports in place for their program. However, in our district, we have been grateful that we have always had a district learning resources team. So every learning assistance teacher at a school has like a mentor learning assistance teacher that oversees that school. So the service is just provided, it's just now from a district level as opposed to a person in their school. And so those are the positions that often remain unfilled, and we don't like to fill them with uncertified teachers, because that really is a specialty area. So for, that is the area, often learning assistance counseling, because we want people to have their education degree, but also a master's in counseling. So they're, you know, building relationships and they know the protocols around dealing with what they deal with. And so often shop teachers, French immersion, not in Tumblr or Chatwin, but in Dawson. And then just from context, last year in our district, 25% of our teaching population was in, was uncertified teachers. So one could say then we need to find 25% of certified teachers. And that is, if you ever have some free time and want to read our framework for enhancing student learning, you can find it on our website. It's a great 22-page read that gives you a wealth of information about, so it fluctuates between 25 and 30% for the question you asked.
Okay, do you know what the projection is for 2025?
We had more success with Indeed when we partnered with them. And so Paul talked about Indeed, but I just wanted to give you a glimpse of that, why it's beneficial. Previously, we would send a person out to university job fairs across Canada. And so in a smaller district, you don't just have one portfolio of recruiting, so when you're gone, somebody's picking up your other portfolios or they're not getting done. And so Paul would be away for two weeks, and he'd go to all these university job fairs to find out that, oh, Edmonton had already hired them all. So we spent $5,000 to go to U of A to buy a table, and there were actually no teachers available there. We used to get a good bang for our Bucket Lakehead University, and so that's in Thunder Bay. So you'd spend about another six grand to travel out there, to spend a day at a table beside Fort St. John, competing with them for teachers from Lakehead University. And so why we partnered with Indeed, and so we took the money for travel and recruitment to these job fairs where we weren't getting anyone, and we put it towards Indeed, because what Indeed does now is, they have a database of millions of resumes that we just don't have access to, and they'll hold virtual fairs for us, where they bring them to us, and it's all done through Zoom, and it's, so we call it, it's active marketing through them compared to passive marketing. And so we have switched, and we're one of the few districts in the province that do that. But so I think it'll probably be about 20% for next year, because we've had great success, but we've also worked with our unions to have hiring start in January. And when I first started in 2014, we couldn't even hire till May due to the collective agreement. So we've been working with all the groups to have hiring start in January, and we've even talked about having our first virtual fair this month, because there's education programs graduating in December. So grabbing students earlier, that sounds terrible. Recruiting student teachers earlier to become professionals in this excellent profession.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you actually answered my second question. That was about the job fairs and such at universities and stuff like that, and I see your point when you're, when you're up against other districts, and obviously one just to the north of us. Now, when we were talking earlier and council to ask some questions and stuff, and we got into a little bit of the conversation, is working together, or we have more, I guess, maybe direct or maybe indirect opportunities to meet with ministry or ministry staff. Maybe we can dialogue, you know, after this, we have an EA that maybe we can send some emails back and forth, as we may be able to set up a meeting where we can have a conversation when it comes to this tier one, tier two, but also, I mean, we call it loan forgiveness, you'd mentioned it something else, but maybe we could have that dialogue. And the reason I bring up loan forgiveness, it was Counselor Norbury, I believe that we were talking to other teachers, and I don't want to mention their names as they still work with the district, but they had mentioned it back when, when they were first going through, there was, they were doing it back then. So to me, when we look at the north compared to the south, I mean, obviously, if you like the nice weather and you like the ocean, you like, you are going to stay down south, green grass, flowers in February or March. Where up north, it's a little bit different, you want Where up north, it's a little bit different. You want to, you want to come up here for the hiking, or the skiing, or the sledding. So I think it's really important, maybe we can work work together on that and try to help. Again, I don't want to step on toes, even when we go and advocate on behalf of the School District 59. But to be honest, we're advocating for our school. I mean, I do care about Chatwin and Dawson Creek. But, you know, we do care about our our students, our youth, and our children here. And it's really important that we try to, you know, I mean, we want to try to make sure we have as many teachers as we can fit. And then when I heard you talk about previously, I believe it was in 2023, when you seen the shortage of housing, if you hear that, it would be nice to know. Sometimes there's other things that are maybe available to the district back then, maybe might have been. But if we have that issue, it'd be nice to have a heads up. I believe we're going to see some things change when it comes to housing in regards to that. There might be something coming online for us. And I think some of that would help with education professionals. Okay, any other questions from council? All right. Again, thank you very, very much for coming, and we appreciate it. Thanks for making that trip up from Dawson Creek. It's really appreciated.
Thank, let me thank you on behalf of the five trustees that are not present from our board for your interest in in this cause. And because as we discussed tonight, directly or indirectly, everybody has a stake in in public education. And so we appreciate your support with with this important need.
Perfect. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Safe travel, home.
Yes, yes. We may take photos and video, and maybe that'll qualify us for the extra isolated, if we can make the roads look.
Just sitting.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items council would like to bring forward under the consent agenda before we move on? Okay, moving on to bylaws, 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 740, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Financial Officer, seeking the adoption of Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 740, 2024. Recommendation, Councilor Knoxanna.
The council adopts the District of Tumblr Ridge 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 740, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. 8.2 Council Remuneration and Expense Amendment, bylaw number 742, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Director of Corporate Services, seeking the adoption of the Council Remuneration and Expense Amendment, bylaw number 742, 2024. Councilor Norbury?
The council adopts the Council Remuneration and Expenses Amendment, bylaw number 742, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Councilor Knoxanna has opposed, motion carries. Council, Council Equipment Reserve Fund, bylaw number 743, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Finance, Chief of Chief Financial Officer, seeking adoption of a Council Equipment Reserve Fund, bylaw number 743, 2024. Councilor Julik?
The council adopts the Council Equipment Reserve Fund, bylaw number 743, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Klickash, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Fees and Charges Amendment, bylaw number 744, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Financial Officer, seeking the adoption of Fees and Charges Amendment, bylaw number 744, 2024. Recommendation, Councilor DeSau.
That council adopts the District of Tumblr Ridge Fees and Charges for Service and Information bylaw, number 744, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Klickash, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Carried. Revenue Anticipation, bylaw number 745, 2024, three readings. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Financial Officer, seeking three readings to the Revenue Anticipation, bylaw number 745, 2024. One at a time, Councilor Norbury.
Thank you, America Calca. I liked Councilor DeSau's way of slowly speaking, and she didn't mumble it like we did. So I'm going to follow your lead. The council gives the first reading to the District of Tumblr Ridge Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw, number 745, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor DeSau, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Second recommendation. Councilor Knoxanna?
That council gives second reading to District of Tumblr Ridge Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw, number 745, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Third recommendation, Councilor DeSau.
That council gives third reading to District of Tumblr Ridge Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw, number 745, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Norbury, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number Financial 746, 2024, three readings. Report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Financial Officer, seeking three readings to the Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 746, 2024. First recommendation, Councilor Hoffman?
That council gives first reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 746, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Knoxanna, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Second recommendation, Councilor Norbury?
That council gives second reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 746, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor DeSau, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Third recommendation. Councilor DeSau?
That council gives third reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 746, 2024.
Seconder, Councilor Knoxanna, any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried. New Business Tangible Capital Asset Policy Amendment, report dated December 2, 2024, from the Director of Corporate Services, seeking the amendment of the tangible capital asset policy. Recommendation, Councilor Knoxanna?
That council amends the tangible capital asset policy as presented.
Seconder, Councilor Norbury, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Progress Report on the 2024 Capital and Special Projects, report dated December 2, 2024, from the Chief Finan Financial Officer, regarding the progress reported on 2024 Capital and Special Projects. Recommendation? Councilor DeSau?
That council receives the Capital and Special Projects Report for information.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board Appointments for 2025, 2026, report dated December 2, 2024, from the Director of Corporate Services, regarding the Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board Appointments for 2025, 2026 term. And read the first recommendation. The council appoints Councilor Julik as a municipal council representative for the Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board, and Councilor DeSau as the alternate municipal council representative for 2025. Seconder, Councilor Klickash, discussion. Let's make a comment. This is one of the things I've I've done. I haven't finished the whole liaison thing, but it'll be coming forward the rest of the council. Okay, can I call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Carried. Take the second recommendation. Councilor Julik?
That council appoints the following Tumblr Ridge residents to the Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board for 2025, 2026, Zachary Schoenberger and Caitlin Garden for a two year term.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Carried. Take the second recommendation. Councilor Julik?
That council appoints the following Tumblr Ridge residents to the Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board for 2025, 2026, Zachary Schoenberger and Caitlin Garden for a two year term.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Carried. Third recommendation. Councilor DeSau?
That council appoints Resident Amber Bell to the Tumblr Ridge Public Library Board for a term ending on April 11, 2026, and that following April 11, 2026, their term of office be extended until the conclusion of the 2026 term, or until the successor or appointed, whichever occurs first, according to Section 6.5 of the Library Act.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, discussion. Councilor Knoxanna?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I like the way that this is worded, that we are now appointing someone until a successor is found at some point in the future, whichever comes first, or the end of 2026. This puts her way over, like, months over what the Library Act allows us to do, which is an eight year service on the library board. We already have a board member who's four years over that. I think that we really need to be cognizant of this, like, why this act was written, and how we can better follow the rules in it.
Okay, Councilor Hoffman?
I don't disagree with Councilor Knoxanna, but we also have a problem of the act also requires five board members, and we're already at minimum. I'm happy to list ideas of how to get more people to apply for the library board, but I don't think the library can function at all without at least those five members.
Okay. Councilor Julik, and then Councilor Knoxanna?
Yeah, I'm not against trying to work with the library to figure out how we can recruit more members, or to show some interest within that board. I do know from when I served on the board, when I worked at the library, the, there was some active recruiting going on, and we just didn't get the, I shouldn't say we, there just was not the uptake. So I don't disagree. I just believe that if that's a want that we have, I think that we, as council, need to maybe come up with a bit of a plan, or have a discussion with the library board to see what we can do.
Okay, Councilor Knoxanna?
Thank you. I'm glad you said that, because the act also states, we should be finding the board. We've dropped the ball as the council of Tumblr Ridge for a lot of years. We have, we were supposed to be going and looking for a board, receiving applications, speaking with members of the public to form a board to run our library. And we've left that up to the library to do for, I don't, maybe forever. I don't know. And it's absolutely a responsibility that was supposed to be ours. So it should come back to us to start recruiting properly through through the District of Tumblr Ridge. And I'm super grateful for these individuals putting their names forward and serving for so long. But at some point, it almost feels like a life sentence, that if you're four years over, you're allowed time. That's, we've, we've got to do something different. So I'm happy you brought that up, because it is something we we need to look at and do better at.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to make comment. I did have a conversation with our C E O during my agenda review. And that was something that was highlighted, that we need to do a better job for the municipality side. And Ms. Scott has some ideas. So I think, moving forward, I think we'll see some different movement there. I think sometimes it gets, you know, if another group is taking it on, it's easier. If, you know what I mean? It's, you know, it almost sounds like government. B C does the same thing, right? So I think that's, you know, that's our job, is try to help out and make sure. But in the same aspect, we have, we have some residents who are willing to step up. And, you know, I look at Amber Bell, and I'm assuming she's been talked to and stuff. And, well, I'm assuming if it came forward from us, it came from the library board. So I'm assuming that, again, I'm just assuming, but that they've discussed it with her. And I mean, I read it that it's still 2026, or if somebody, if a successor is found or is appointed before then. So, I mean, we'd be relooking at this if if we don't get proper advertising out looking for a, for trustees for the library board. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can I call a motion, all in favor? Opposed. Carried. Fourth recommendation, Councilor Julik?
That the term of office of the trustee Trent Ernst is extended for 2025, 2026, or until a successor is appointed, whichever happens first, according to Section 6.5 of the Library Act.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman, discussion. Councilor Knoxanna?
Thank you. I'm going to bring up the same point. This gentleman is four years over what we were supposed to allow. And I get COVID happened in there. So if we're going to use an excuse, let's use COVID. But it's time for us to step up and do a better job. So I'm happy to vote in favor of this motion. But I, I want to see us, as the district, take on our job and have this responsibility and do the work now.
Okay, Councilor Julik?
I'm not sure how we add things to the fuel list. Could this be one of the things that pops on that list?
Oh, yeah, we can. I'll be honest, Ms. Scott was unable to attend today. She's planned on speaking to it. So I think she's well aware, it's something that, you know, when, as we went through it, we found it all. You know, maybe it's something that was missed previously by previous C E Os. But it was definitely discussed and talked about. So she's got a pulse on it. But I mean, it doesn't hurt to have staff at it to fuel. But I know she wanted to talk about it tonight, well, as well, but she was unable to attend. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can I call the question, all in favor? Carried. Somebody can get Councilor Norbury, please? Okay, Acting Mayor Schedule 2025, report dated December 2, 2024, 2024, from the Director of Corporate Services, regarding the Acting Mayor Schedule for 2025. Councilor Knoxanna?
The council approves the 2025 Acting Mayor Schedule as presented.
Seconder, Councilor Julik, discussion. Okay, so I just kept the schedule the same as the previous year. I think if council has any concerns, or if you just reach out to me, we can have a conversation. Seemed to work last year very well. So I just kept it the same flow. Okay, can I call the question, all in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on to scheduling meetings. I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we counsel the December 10 budget meeting. Seconder, Councilor Julik, discussion. I'll make a comment. It was brought forward from staff. They are not going to be prepared to have all the information that is needed for that meeting. One will be added, once to, once they determine the timeframe that they can get stuff together. Okay, call the question, all in favor? Carried. Okay, anything else with scheduling meetings from council side? Just so everybody's aware, Holly Jolly is on Wednesday, December 4. I'll be away, but Councilor Norbury will be acting mayor that day, so that week. So reach out to him if you can attend. More the merrier. And then on December 20 is sledding with Santa in the Geo Park. Again, I know last year, when we talked about it, it seems like previous years, we always leave it up to staff, or that senior staff, or senior staff member to decorate the vehicle on our behalf. I think last year, it was, there was conversation that we will meet and decorate. And I just asked Chief Curry what that date is. Do we have a spot available for the 19th or the 18th to decorate the unit?
Your worship, we can certainly make that possible. I know we will be decorating the fire apparatus that are going to be in there during the morning of that Friday. And so we're happy to have council bring the council mobile to the fire hall, and we can certainly assist if that works.
What's the 20th in the morning like for council? Working? Yeah, I probably won't be available. Okay, we'll, I'll let you know, but it sounds like 20th morning will work.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else for scheduling meetings from council? Any notice of motions? Councilor Hoffman?
Thank you for reminding me. I plan on making a motion in the future regarding the cost, benefit, and viability of fluoridizing the public water.
Just want to make sure staff gets it. Not up for debate right now. Did you get it, or did you need to hear it again? Councilor Hoffman, just want to repeat yourself so staff gets it, please. Unless you can email it to them.
Preferred an email. Preferred an email? Email to?
Can you email it to the CEO?
Yeah, email to Ms. Scott.
Done.
Okay. Any other notice of motions from council? Okay, council's business. Uh, thank you very much, Counselor Nuxana. Anything else from the floor from council? Um, I mean, I mentioned a couple of things and, and that would be the, um, Tom Bridge Fire Department Council slash Mayor's food drive, well attended by fire apparatus. So thank you very much and the fire staff, uh, that showed up to partake and help us out. Ms. Curry for attending, um, with your children to, to also assist and run food. I think it was huge. So thank you very, very much. Um, to council that showed up, myself, Counselor Nuxana, Counselor Norbury, and Counselor DeSau. Um, we did get off a little bit of a late start. Um, Fire Department ended up with a call just as we were coming into the church to start the process. Um, yeah, I thought it was well attended. The Junior Rangers, obviously the New Life Assembly, um, volunteers as well. I mean, it was, it was great. I thought it was well attended. Um, I haven't heard on the food collection. Um, I didn't get a chance to reach out to them this week, but I think anything that we can do to raise, um, food or gift cards for the food bank to help the people that are in need in our community, anytime. Um, so yeah, thank you very much. Um, I know there were some people missed this year. Uh, I will make sure we don't miss the invites next year. Um, was asked who kind of, uh, organizes the food drive. Probably spoke a bit out of turn, but in my opinion, I, I still believe it. It's the Tumblr Ridge Fire Department that organized it. If it wasn't for the Fire Department, we would have been there till midnight the next night, not the same night. We would have been out there until Thursday at midnight, um, without their help. That's, so that's my belief. It's the Tumblr Ridge Fire Department's, uh, food drive with assistance from mayor and council. Um, but yeah, so we missed the RCMP, I'll be honest. Uh, I was reached out by the RCMP. Um, so we'll make sure they don't miss. I said it wasn't the Fire Department's fault. It's the mayor's fault. Um, not going to let the volunteers take that hit. That was myself for sure. Um, so we'll definitely make sure they're, they're on the, on the wicket next year. Um, yeah, it's well done. Thanks for everybody that could support it and thanks for all the people that showed up. Um, Junior Rangers definitely helped make it a late night. It was a little chilly, um, but we got through it. So thank you very much for that. Another next one I mentioned before I go to the floor from council was our U13 female, uh, young ladies from Tumblr Ridge here. They played in the finals, uh, yesterday at Wickfest and they were, they came out as silver medal winners, winners. So I think that's huge. Uh, that is huge. Uh, first, first time Tumblr Ridge has ever attended Wickfest. And what a great opportunities for these young ladies to be able to attend that. I've seen lots of videos, lots of pictures sent to me. I shared a few things on the, on Facebook to the mayor's page. I think the community should be aware that, uh, the dedication, not only from the, those young females that went, but their parents and, and all the people that helped sponsor it. I think it's huge. So any other council business for the floor? Question out, appeared. Mr. Curry, are there any emailed in questions?
None that have been forwarded, your worship.
Okay. Take adjournment, please. Counselor Norbury?
Up to December 2nd, 2024, regular council meeting be adjourned.
Seconder, Counselor DeSau, all in favor? Carried.